I'll share my screen if that sounds good, Devin. Okay, so. This marks, uh, this marks sort of the beginning of the fiscal year end and the start of our requests for, you know, as you saw appropriation transfers and now you reserve fund transfers. We are facing deficits in a few different departments. Some of those are anticipated, some of those less anticipated. Tonight we're dealing with the ones that we really could conceivably have seen coming. At the top here of my screen, I'll zoom in a little bit actually, so you can see a little bit better. We have the total reserve fund balance in FY twenty-three, starting at the beginning of FY twenty-three. And below that approved reserve fund transfers, we haven't approved any this year. So the balance remains two point nine million right now. Tonight, uh, we are asking for three reserve fund transfer approvals to go to AC. The first of those is for snow and ice. Uh, we just went through a, uh, the exercise of approving some appropriation transfers. One of those was to take some salary savings, um, and some services that either we weren't able to get to or, uh, we've held off on this year. In order to bring down that snow and ice transfer from the actual deficit of five hundred and forty thousand to what we have here of four hundred and forty-seven thousand. I will let, um, actually turn it over to Erin if she would like to talk more about, um, the snow events we have this year.
So, um, good evening, Commissioner of Public Works, Department of Galentine. And I was kind of before this Whiteboard was our annual internal appropriation transfer and the reserve fund transfer request to balance out and close out our snow and ice for the year twenty-three. Um, we have completed a review of all snow and ice expenditures for this season, and it was an unusual year actually for the department. Uh, we responded to seventeen storm events, and mainly these were a combination of snow, ice, uh, and rain. A lot of freeze thaw events, uh, only totaling thirteen inches of snowfall between December eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and March fourteenth, twenty twenty-eight. And our, our last event the year before was March twelve. So, um, these events involve pre-treatment with brine treatment during the event, sand fault, and then addressing freeze thaw in the aftermath. Uh, the first powerful event was on January fifteenth, uh, with just under three inches. And as a quick comparison, uh, the previous year we had twenty-three emergency responses and fifty-three inches of snow. And if we look a few years back, we had, um, thirteen responses of forty-seven inches of snow. So it's really all over the place. If we look at our average over, uh, the last six, uh, six years, we have about nineteen emergency response events per year. Uh, and an average of about thirty-eight inches of snow. And when I say response, that is really our urgency response that are prep to our, uh, work through the entire event until it's complete. Uh, the town administrator authorized the expenditure for snow and ice control in excess of the available appropriation, uh, pursuant to chapter forty-four, section thirty-one D on January sixteen. Uh, and what we have is a total deficit of five hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars, twenty-one cents. Uh, as Ms. Crowley mentioned earlier, uh, just a reminder, this snow and ice, uh, account is separate from the other department public works accounts. And it's budgeted to get the town set up for the first major transfer. Uh, with an initial budget of just over four hundred and four thousand dollars. Uh, with this, um, funding, we're able to fix, replace, and install clouds, uh, snow lowers, large and small snow fighting equipment, uh, prepare our inventory for purchase. Uh, call, prepare the brine station, and enter into our basic contracts. Uh, this is for our third-party vendors for equipment operators and forties of work for the Norristers. Um, our expenditure this year was a total of nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, uh, and change, uh, for our full snow and ice operations. Uh, we mentioned we looked at our, um, surpluses that we had in services elsewhere. And with the, uh, appropriations transfer of the ninety-three thousand, uh, we will, uh, be looking to close that deficit with a reserve fund transfer of the four hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. So I would like to commend, uh, my deputy commissioner of operations, uh, and highway sanitation director Kevin Johnson. He not only leaves the effort through this season, but he is always thinking about, uh, new ways and technologies to treat snow and ice all year. For certification classes for our employees, to weather intelligence software, um, different types of blades, brine mixing formula. And he's really committed to providing the best service and operations that is possible. So thank you. Uh, so we respectfully request approval of, uh, both the appropriation transfer and reserve fund transfer, uh, that will then, uh, go to the advisory thing for their review.
Great. Any questions? I wonder if, um, Johnny could page down?
Yeah, I would be happy to do that. So, um, if you want, I can, uh, continue. I was gonna continue with the next two items if you didn't have questions. But if you'd like, I can show you the balance. Yeah. Um, so, um, the other two requests we're gonna look at tonight. I have a request from the town clerk who will unfortunately not be joining us. I will, uh, speak in his stead on that. We have a request from town meeting, and then we have a few potential requests that are possibly coming down the pipeline the next couple of weeks. Um, and by possibly, I mean, these top two are almost certainly coming. It's just the exact number that we're not sure about. So, um, as I said, we have, uh, the town clerk and town meeting. We also have, uh, an overage employer overtime that currently is sitting at around a one, one point one million in deficit. That's not the total spend. Um, and we're hoping to cover three hundred thousand of that with that, we say, as you and I last talked a couple of weeks ago. We wanna talk again and try to narrow down the exact amount we'll be able to take off the, for some, the reserve fund transfer total. But, uh, then we also have building school utilities, which we did a transfer recently to cut that number down. It's actually over by about eight hundred thousand this year. Uh, that is due to a number of increases in costs, but primarily Charlie will come in with a, uh, much more detailed story than me and I are working on. Explain the overage and school building utilities, but it's primarily electricity cost increases, gas, hot gas usage increases, natural gas usage increases. And then, uh, water is a combination of a very hot summer that we had last summer and, and a seven percent increase in water rates. Uh, but, um, it's a total of eight hundred thousand dollars, but we're taking fifty off with salary savings. So it's seven hundred and forty-five thousand. Library and fire both saw the same increase in electricity costs. Um, those are on there. I'm, I'm working with those departments to see if we can find a way to cover those within their budgets. Uh, but I wanted to make the board aware of all potential, um, R and T's. So if all R and Ts were approved, you'd go from a balance of two point nine million to a balance of just seven hundred and seventy thousand.
Then that's what I was looking for.
I'm sure. Yeah. So, um, any questions on Aaron's snow and ice tonight? And if not, I'll go into town clerk, town leader.
I think maybe I would just add that, um, in looking at last year, our deficit was close to one point six million for snow. And with internal transfers, we were, uh, at a select board, select board looking for one point three. So we really are fortunate that we had a milder winter this year that, um, you know, is less dependent on, uh, you know, the reserve fund, close that gap.
And I'll just add to that point, um, that's part of the reason why the strategy funding is the reserve fund. If we were to overbudget for snow and ice, there are constraints around our ability to bring back down that appropriation. So that's why we rely on reserve fund for primary.
That's why I called it a sort of, uh, anticipated expenditure. It's something we, we do every year, is something you both know. So, um, any other questions on snow and ice before I move on? Um, Erin reminded me to introduce myself. I am Charlie Young, and this is town administrator for finance. Uh, thank you, Erin, for that. And, you know, I figure everybody knows my name and face by now. It's been six months. Now, um, so anyway, I'm happy to address you all. And in Ben Hoffman's stead, thank you, Ben, for all you are doing this week, running a special election and running two more nights at town meeting. From what I hear, Ben's slammed, so he appreciates us, uh, allowing him to step aside. So, um, this year, the town clerk's office faced a few unanticipated expenditures. The major unanticipated expenditure was the Votes Act. The Votes Act, if you don't know, implemented universal vote by mail for both state and town elections. And implemented early, expanded early voting, significantly expanded early voting. Those things combined added up to tens of thousands, um, I would guess, close to a hundred thousand in personnel overtime expenses throughout the year. Getting poll workers and people in early to do early vote by, uh, early vote by mail and early voter. Um, we knew this was coming, so, um, we obviously, you know, petitioned the state for unfunded mandate help, uh, assistance. We have not gotten that unfunded mandate assistance yet. Uh, we're expecting, uh, Ben and I are looking and expecting to see about a sixty percent return on those. So, uh, with that in mind, um, we don't want to, you know, we, we, when we came up with this number, we didn't wanna overpromise on what we were going to get in the state. Um, so this is a conservative estimate of what the town clerk's office will need for the rest of the year. Um, it covers that deficit close to, you know, a hundred, four more thousand in personnel, uh, costs. Um, it also covers the special election that we are doing this week. Um, and, uh, it, it uses as much as possible the town clerk's budget to cover that deficit. So in total, I've estimated they need about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty thousand to finish the year. Um, they, uh, only have sixteen thousand remaining, and we have a contingency bug where we keep some of the unfunded mandate money that we receive every year. Um, and we would utilize thirty thousand of that as well to bring this R and T down to ninety thousand dollars. So that, that is what, um, that's what Ben and I determined is really needed for the rest of the year. It's, uh, it's a conservative estimate. We happen to not need the state aid election fund, so that thirty thousand I was talking about. Let's say that this covered foot costs more than we needed to, we would leave that money there for future years. Um, especially since we don't know exactly how much we're gonna get in unfunded mandates. Um, so, um, with that said, uh, happy to take questions on that. Um, but just to add, Cal Hating also saw some, uh, anticipated expenditures this year with, um, a, an extra town meeting in January and a first in-person town meeting in three years, um, that have added significantly to the costs we, we budgeted for. So we're seeking twenty-five thousand to cover those costs as well.
Oh, good question. Uh, so if we do get sixty thousand or something like that.
Yep.
What bucket does that go to?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question. So, um, when you say you're talking about unfunded mandate, state aid, yep. Um, and it's sixty percent, so I don't know. Yeah, it goes, it goes in what's called, uh, what we call the state aid elections fund, or this, or state aid contingency budget. Um, and that's something that, it's an account that we manage.
It doesn't replenish the reserve, it doesn't even go into the budget.
That's correct. It doesn't go back into the money. So it's, because the money is received later. So essentially, when the costs were incurred in November, we submitted our request for unfunded mandates. Or we've gotten as of March, a tentative, yes, to sixty percent of those costs. The money will not come in until next year, so it goes into this account to support other state elections. So, for example, next year, if we, uh, we had cost overruns associated with the state election, we could tap that reserve. Um, it has, I think in the realm of sixty thousand dollars today. So not a significant amount of money. And we're planning to tap thirty of it in order to help fund this issue. So it's, it's actually, it's a hundred and thirty thousand, you know, that they need to finish the year, sixteen thousand from their budget or so, thirty thousand or so from the, from the contingency fund, and ninety probably was some.
Yes, my point is it's not, doesn't become free cash, or it doesn't, it's not subject to the town school partnership.
Correct. It's not subject to the town school partnership. Exactly. Yep. Um, if, if the, let's say that this ninety thousand goes farther than we expected, the resulting surplus would end up in free cash. But, uh, the state aid election funds would stay in that, in that pocket.
Thank you.
Jones. Now, you're just filling in for Ben. I think there's probably a lot of people who are listening and heard you say special state election this week.
Yeah, yeah.
You wanna just fill everybody in as to what that's all about.
Yeah, so, um.
You won the lowest turnout election.
Yes, it's, I believe precinct sixteen, I remember, precinct sixteen, uh, precinct sixteen had a special election yesterday. Yes, it was yesterday, um, to fill, uh, to, uh, fill a base. So, um, that, I, I would love to know how that turned out. I spoke with Ben today. He seemed quite busy, so, um.
We know how it turned out. More than much else, too.
There you go. Thank you, Charlie. Well, either way, there weren't any bucks in person. Uh, but that's, special election does come with, uh, you know, fund people to be at the polls, you need to fund, um, you know, it's an unanticipated, uh, need to mobilize people. Hence why it's helping to run this, uh, this R and T.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, uh, I'd like to move approval then of the three items. I need to reread them slowly. This is going ahead and we vote. All in favor, John?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. We appreciate it.
Next, boards and commissions interviews. Planning board, that's invited.
The question that is interviewed equals.
Oh, I'm sorry. It says right here, post home.
I think he's a relatively new town meeting member, and, uh, it has been a lot to manage. So he would like to come for you on an evening that is not also a town meeting, which hopefully will be June thirteenth.
Okay, okay, next, um, there are missions advisory board logo discussion. So he's gonna.
We've got a bunch of us here.
Okay. Wait, one minute. And, uh, looking to start with some background, um, while you're here.
Okay.
Um, you know, the, uh, ZIAB board. Or, uh, ZIAB, I guess, or the B.
Well, yes.
Uh, it kind of originated, please correct me if I'm wrong, uh, at the Select Board Climate Action Committee. And, uh, it, it began, it became, uh, ZIAB in a way that maybe is a little confusing, but it can be origin as a select board, um, committee is important and remains as, uh, uh, an important factor in how we as a select board relate to it. Now, we haven't always been diligent in our oversight, but that's gonna change. So I saw on the, uh, agenda for your meeting that you were gonna just announce it at the meeting. And I, I asked that it not be announced at the meeting, but that it be presented to the select board. Not, not that it's gonna be controversial, but I think it's important just the nature of it. You know, the select board had some relationship to the ZIAB, um, so that, uh, you were more, you were as successful as possible in the work you do.
And I'm glad that you brought that up, Wendy Stahl, chair of ZIAB. Um, I'm glad that you brought that up when you did, because we all agree, it's an important relationship cultivated, and that hasn't been cultivated, um, yet.
Yeah.
Um, but we're happy to share our thoughts on this. Um, I know the, um, actual design was included in your packet, but before we get to looking at that. Um, I'm Wendy, this is Kathleen, and Werner, and of course, Director Barasso. Um, the thought about having a logo at all came up because we have been communicating with the public in a variety of different ways over the past year or so. We, um, we're handing out a flyer advertising a state-run program to retrofit triple deckers. We have a monthly newsletter that we send out. And we thought it'd be helpful to have a logo to put on these communications, so that there's an understanding that certain projects are, um, officially supported by the Zero Mission Advisory Board, and, uh, to work as a social, as a sort of social physics in creating encouragement, um, in participation as a community. So I delegated Kathleen Scanlon and Werner Moe. She's an architect. He's, uh, the former chair of the Select Board Climate Action Committee that you just mentioned, um, to work on this logo project and bring it back to the ZIAB for review and discussion. Um, Kathleen had previously worked with a graphic designer named Robin Friedman. Her company's called Visual Velocity. She's a Brookline resident for fifty years, and she actually worked with Kathleen in the past on some others out front graphic design options. So Kathleen approached her and she agreed to work with ZIAB pro bono to develop a design for us. So Werner and Kathleen met with Robin, uh, to discuss the goals for the logo, and they wanted to create a brand identity so residents could recognize what ZIAB was promoting. Have a fresh goal design that would match our impactful goals of the Zero Mission Advisory Board. It would need to incorporate Brookline's goal of net zero by twenty forty with our emphasis on electrification. And also, um, the goal would be to use it on our newsletters, on the website, and be compatible with the existing town seal as well. So, um, Kathleen and Werner had two meetings with Robin where, uh, she presented several, uh, options for them. And they selected a preferred option, and then they had a conversation about colors. And they decided that blues and greens really fit the, uh, the town logo and went with the feel of, uh, environmental activism. Uh, and so I don't know if you can pull up the logo on from one of, from your packet somehow. I tried to print it on my, uh, printer, but my green wasn't working today, so I decided not to show you the wrong logo. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Nice logo. There you go.
Yeah. So as you can see, it's old, fresh, and modern. Um, we felt like it was a very successful option because, um, it conveys clearly who we are, but also the E, um, means it's a plug, the electrification, which is a very core tenet of all of our work. Um, the colors being very compatible, if I can go to the third, um, image.
By the way, the color is not, oh, it's not purply.
It's blue. It's a, it's more of a like a bluish teal than a gray, but projection that appears in there. Yeah, right. So, um, uh, we'd like to present it to the next ZIAB meeting, um, so it can be used on our communications going forward.
How do I, how, how do I understand that it's connected to Brookline?
It said, oh, it doesn't play Brooklyn on it, but we wouldn't put it on anything without the town seal as well.
Yeah, would you consider adding Brookline to, you know, could you, could you blow that up against? Yeah, it's, it's just, it's too standalone for me. It's like its own thing. Uh, I don't see any relation to Brookline. So if it said Brookline is Zero Mission Advisory Board, um, I think that could make, make the connection. Otherwise, this could be Lexington's logo.
Yeah, that's true. I, I don't see any reason why the designer couldn't add Brookline. It's a pretty easy.
What font do you think?
But that's the designer.
What font do you think? Well, there are two fonts up there. And there's a little.
Yeah.
There's a song, um, you know, goes back thirty, forty years old. Uh, Betsy Ross, in, uh, in response to, he finds that, um, her, her design of Stars and Stripes, you know, doesn't work very well. Everybody wants to be an art designer. Um, and so, that's a good idea. I like that.
Well, just, absolutely, absolutely. But let's not get into fonts. Let's, let's.
But if, but there is, I mean, there is a broader, a broader question, and I don't know, maybe I read this somewhere, Chaz, about a broader branding strategy for the town and departments, because it is kind of disconnected in all of this. Yeah.
Yes.
What I was gonna suggest, Devin, uh, talk about that.
I can, I can, or you? Yeah, I was gonna say, or, yeah. I didn't want to turn on the spot. Um, the, um, yes, um, this is something that has been on Devin's mind. Our assistant town administrator for operations for a long time. Um, we would love to do, we'd love to bring on a branding consultant and really standardize the, um, the lexicon, graphical lexicon of the county. Um, there are some departments that do this very well, and you have state branded amenities that also reflect the broader community. GW is one of them. Thank you, Erin. And Public Health is another. Um, they've done that work in the middle. We think there should be something that builds on that and ensures that's general cohesion throughout the community. But also, you know, when you look at, uh, for example, letter, um, you know, some departments have given letter, had some don't. Um, I was, I was speaking in fonts, so I was a guest to come in and find that the font in my letter is kind of wrong. Um, and I'd say, I can't believe it. Um, we don't even have sans serif. It's great for letters, but, you know, for the block of the letter, it actually looks like. I, 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 you know, other departments have been more, um, and then more upfront in making designs that reflect the intent of that, but to create an internal community across boards and departments, give guidance to these organizations, that when they think about how to create that, they know what the town's values are, and the town's color palette and all of those things. I think that's really important. I will say, in case anyone was wondering, uh, the flag and the seal are in our bylaws. Uh, so you're wondering why we haven't changed those. They're in a bylaw, and that's the problem with the town meeting to figure out.
At the town meeting, I have a few meetings set up with some, uh, small design companies that have worked with cities and towns previously to put together a style guide. So what that will do is give the town, like Chaz mentioned, a cohesive font and color palette and standardize, uh, the way all of our communications go out. Uh, that has been in my parking lot, I like to call it, um, for a few reasons, uh, money being one of them. Uh, and also just time with our competing priorities. But that was something, uh, that when I took this new role, I had indicated to, um, Mel, and then when Chad came on, that this would be a really important next step for the town. So I'm looking forward to pursuing that in the next fiscal year.
I think, sorry, I think it's part of your whole, your, your, your strategy for sharing consistency across for, for residents. But, um, I do think that all of our logos should have a ladder, it's the most connected. A rather, some way to connect that to a.
Let me just check one for. I don't think, uh, fonts are, are a small matter. Uh, and, you know, that font is a sans serif, but it's not the same sans serif that we have in our, um, logo. So, uh, just to just that, you know, we should have, those things should be comparing, because when you look at a page and see different fonts, it's kind of confusing on a very subliminal, subliminal level. So that's, you know, something to think about. It's not a big deal right now, but.
Um, Mike? So this is fine. I, I appreciate. The day of right, right on target. And, um, okay, I accept, I accept the point of that. I just wanna make sure that it's, that designer we know that's who are trying to do that. But, um, um, there's a broader question, which is we have, um, the, um, Zero Mission Advisory Board, and there are other boards as well, that are really, form a really important element in the, um, uh, in, in the construction of, of our town strategy, what we, what we're trying to do. And I think, uh, this is an opportunity to say, it would be great to have the board come in and give us some advice, as it were, about, you know, where their priorities are, uh, where they headed, and the same is true for some of the other boards. Uh, Transportation Board comes to mind, um, and, uh, I'd appreciate it if you could think about making time for that on the, you know, on the agendas. You know, for June or fall, or whenever we have an opportunity to take a break from the routine of, uh, approving liquor licenses for, um, uh, for events at, uh, at last end of the week.
Okay, I'm just gonna speak up, 'cause I don't think you can see that my hand is up.
I didn't. I'm sorry.
You're behind the C.
It's been up for a while, so, um, so, um, I, I think we have two issues here that are worth discussing, and I think they're, they're, they intersect, but they're unique. And I think the first we've identified, which is, we need to have a consistent, there needs to be some, some consistency across the town of logos that represent the town, whatever that is. I think Paul's Warren is a, Paul's point is a very good one, needs to say Brookline somewhere, somehow. But I think there's a second question that we're not talking about, or maybe I'm just not hearing, it's very hard to hear. Is which boards and commissions get their own logos? What's the policy there? Like, we should have one. It shouldn't just be, oh, we know, you know, I think this is, uh, to be clear, I think there's a very cool logo, but I think it needs to align with the town logo, and I think we need to understand why ZIAB gets a logo, and maybe some other commission or committee doesn't. So I do think that needs to be a part of this conversation.
Yeah.
For example, the Brookline Commission for Women has their own logo. And there's one other that comes to mind. To your point, Miriam, there is no policy surrounding how that happens. But in a couple of weeks on your future list, we have a discussion of select board policies coming up, so we can put something in front of you there for that discussion. Uh, it's been ad hoc up to this point.
It does, it does raise the issue of the haves and have-nots, and are we communicating importance, um, on various boards and commissions by those who have a logo and those who don't?
Yeah, totally.
We wanna be doing accidentally.
I just wanted to add, you know, the whole, I don't know if you heard this, Miriam, the whole reason that we identified a need for a logo was because we're starting to communicate out to the public. And for instance, when we compared a flyer on a state run program, it looked like, you know, honestly, like, like there was no officialness to it at all. You didn't understand the group behind it. You know, there was no state, you know, there was no participation. It was just us trying to bring a really good program to the forefront for Brookline residents to take advantage of. And that's how we identified that we really needed something that could communicate some involvement by ZEAT. Maybe not every commission needs that. Communication.
Clear, I don't begrudge that you want a logo, right? I just think we, as a select board, need to be more consistent about who, who should and who shouldn't have a logo and why. Maybe that should be one of the criteria. If it's a commission that has a lot of outreach and there's, there, you know, they need some way to identify, then that should be one of the criteria potentially. But I think we, as a select board, need to be, you know, we need to be more consistent.
Can I ask, the timing, when do you need to have a logo ready for launching? Is this, is there, it's a mistake? Because I, you know, it would be really helpful if we're gonna have this on our agenda about branding and what Miriam's raising. I'd love to see all the logos just on one, like one screen and see what's all out there. To see what the universe of our logos ought to be. And how it may intersect with the work that you're gonna be doing. Again, but I think it's important to have a logo. I think branding is really important. And if if there's something that's important that's gonna be communicated and you need it, are you open to adjustments possibly in the branding logo in the future, should, you know, our branding consultant come back and say, we really need to start the.
So I'd say our designer has completed what she has agreed to do pro bono for us. But if the town has somebody that they're hiring, then yes, we are open to alterations of this. We communicate every month with a newsletter from ZEAT. And so the ones that we've sent out so far haven't had a logo on them. But I don't know exactly, in addition to our newsletter, I don't know what other communications are gonna come up in the future where we would need a logo. But are you guys, I'm getting a sense that I'm a little, actually, I'm a little confused. I don't know whether you're heading towards no use of anything until the town decides on this plan or use this until the town decides.
I'd like to speak for myself and other people can, I think, definitely. I think what we're saying is that, you know, this is not as ZEAT communication, it's a Brookline communication. And that's critically important. So I think Paul suggesting Brookline.
Oh, great. We can do that.
It's really all that, at least I think, you know, has to be conveyed in this meeting before we can approve it. I mean, anyone else?
I think, I think you're making us think of, frankly, we haven't thought of it, right? And you're causing us to take a step back and have a broader view about what's going on with areas. I think this is good, actually, that you're kind of forcing us to have this conversation. I think it's important to have.
I just need their marching orders.
Okay. Anyone to object to voting to approve?
With the addition of Brooklyn.
With the addition of. And make sure it's not a font that is inconsistent with everything else. I mean, there are already three fonts.
You can't say that because you don't know what the standard font is. We've already got a font.
I know, but I do know, I do know that three fonts, hold on, Paul. Constable hit you up. There's three fonts, there are three fonts on the, on the, on the logo. And that, that's one font. I suppose we add another font. It's not just one of those. There's four fonts. That's right. And in a very subtle way, that confuses people. Anyway, you know, you know where we're coming from. Okay, I'm of approval of the ZEAT logo as, as not amended, but as to be revised to include the original line. All in favor, John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Chair both sides. Thank you. Now the fun starts.
So you can.
You wanna introduce them or? And that has a particular recommendation that petitioners agree to, is that correct?
That's correct.
And can you put it up on the, Devon, can you put it up on the?
Okay, so thank you for reconsidering and taking another look at this. What happened is through the prompting and support, as like for number one, I reached out to CTO S Perry Bores. He had originally had an amended version of the warrant article that petitioners did not agree to, but had a thought that we could come to an agreement on an amended version that further simplified this particular warrant article. I think I mentioned in my earlier remarks, you know, our intent in drafting this warrant article was to give the town an space and support flexibility in setting up this office. But there were some concerns that CTO S and others had about the bullet points. And then we've written them. And I said, why don't we just get rid of the bullet points? Let's make this as simple as possible and say that the town shall have an office of housing stability. It's up to the town administrator where it's placed. It will the CTO S added the word and address after combat displacement to recognize that when you're talking about folks with unhoused status, that once someone is unhoused, they may have a constellation of social services issued they need and it's not in a silo. And then struck out the language about providing a forum on displacement, recognizing that many agencies may, may be interested in that and be part of the forum. So it's a very, the language is very basic. CTO S has approved it, has moved to support it. Petitioners are supporting it well and making it our main motion. Last night, the advisory reconsidered their referral and now is supporting this version.
Unanimous, I think, wasn't it?
I, I believe so.
You achieved unanimity with the advisory?
Yes. I've, I've gone from multiple referral motions to unanimity.
So one of my concerns, and I think this addresses that, or at least in our discussion, the discussion on the list, I think is resolved, is that I would not want this to be an office that becomes a department, right? But that's some big practice. And I think we use the word office more of a generic term, or not a generic term, but representing just maybe locus for people to come to seek services. That was one main concern. I think that's. I assume that you don't disagree with that.
Oh, I don't disagree with it. Office, it would be up to the town ministry or where to place it, but it could be in a department. The only reason to use the term office of housing stability, and CTO S has it in their report, is because that is a common term in the greater Boston region for a function like this. Or that's the term in Boston and Somerville and a couple of other means. So it's a familiar term to vendors.
Any other?
And I'll just briefly say, first, I want to thank Chi Chi for her willingness to reach out to Perry Bores and CTO S to see if they, there was a path to common ground. I think that phone call was important and I give you a lot of credit for making it and having the willingness to essentially negotiate and have a conversation about it. This does greatly simplify our town meeting once before. We've essentially eliminated two referral motions. And we're now down to one motion. I happen to support the motion. I think it's a good idea. I think it simplifies the language. It gives a tremendous amount of flexibility to the town administrator. Very much if it was a referral, the town administrator still has full power to determine where this office might sit, what office means. It could be a resource, a fraction of a resource. And I think that gives us a beachhead for providing this support service and we can determine what to do with it in future as demand increases or subsides.
And if I'm wrong, Chad, I'm sorry, Miriam, you had your hand up.
Oh, yes, thank you. Well, as Chi Chi knows, I was the lone vote on the select board, supporting it the first time around. And I still support it. So I'd be, I'm glad to see it evolving. Because I think it's really, frankly, an important role. I'm gonna say what I said the first time, which is for anyone who's ever had to use the resources that Sarah Kaplan has at her fingertips. It's the same idea of providing support for the disability services. It is for folks in our town, over fifty percent of whom are renters for housing. And I think it's really important. And so I'm glad other people are coming. I'm glad on this agreement. And yes, I'm totally supporting it.
Which we're all in violent agreement with. Yeah, yeah. Actually, first, so the profit or the procedure here is the select board can add to you to do that. So you're gonna say that, I think that's the intention.
Well, A was referral. That was kind of how it went. Now it's just by law, it's just establishing, you know, it should be established the office. And the town administrator access that I have the authority to oppose to you reorganization of certain departments. So that's what we have here. That I would come back to you if this passes, I'd come back to you with proposals, saying this is where this office is gonna live. This is how it's gonna go. You give me guidance. She thought about that. And then you eventually, you vote, you vote on that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, I just want to be sure everyone realizes that this harmonious approach continues. We're gonna have a much shorter time.
You want to go out and have something to do with.
All right, then let's vote.
Okay, I'm of approval of a reconsideration of Article thirteen. All in favor, John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Chair both sides. Now, now that we're reconsidering, I'm of approval of Article thirteen as amended by the recommendation of CTO S that we have in our hands or you've seen on the board on the screen. All in favor, if you can give us a say aye. John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Miriam, sorry.
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Chair both sides. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right here. Next, Article seventeen. Well, is this gonna be easy to? Paul?
There are two, there's a motion and a motion to amend the motion. One, one, one thing is easier and another thing is harder. So all in advance. There is a motion on the table by town meeting member vote to refer the matter to the select board, or it does need to quote, consider other approaches that would be consistent with the article's equity goals. The goal of making the individual court on progress by fall twenty three, we're gonna be spending at the town meeting. There is, and I'll put an amendment to that motion. Oh, sorry. Andrew is here. This vote, she wants to say, sorry, I didn't realize that you were on. Please go ahead. Let me just speak for you.
Can I, can I add? Both of you, we both called me before admitting this and asked my thoughts on this. I said that not committing to supporting it, but it was not an unreasonable proposal to ask the select board or somebody to figure out this problem that we have between Article seventeen and voters, the voters. Anyway, tell us your views.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. My name's Marissa Vogt. I'm a town meeting member in precinct six. And yeah, that's, you know, that's basically the gist of it is I'm proposing to refer Article seventeen to you folks, to the select board. Because, you know, there's this tension between wanting to support the equity goals of the article, which I think most, most folks on town meeting really, really want to support those equity goals. But then we're only four weeks away, four weeks out from the town election where we heard loud and clear from the voters that they want to keep the, the number of stores, marijuana stores to four right now. So, you know, how do we, how do we kind of resolve this? And I, I want to avoid a straight down vote on Article seventeen because I don't want town meeting to send that unfortunate message of, you know, not supporting the equity licenses. But then again, at the same time, you know, if a straight yes vote would, would would, would not send a message of respect to the voters for their, their message on question three. So I thought a, a good solution would be to refer it to the select board, specifically to the select board because you folks are most directly accountable to voters in a way that a committee appointed by the moderator is not. You know, and so if we are, if we are, if we want to make sure that this referral respects the voters, voters, I think, referring it to a board that meets in a very transparent, open manner on a regular schedule that is directly accountable to voters is, is the way to go. And then hopefully that there, there can be some, some way forward through community discussions and, and work where we figure out a way to, to kind of balance these two competing interests and, you know, refer some, a couple of other benefits. There's also an imminently expected report from the ACPH about the effects of marijuana on the community. There's some state regulations that are expected later this fall. So that's kind of the, you know, there, there's some other benefits to, to kind of waiting to, to vote an up or down yes or no on this. And as for the amendments, you know, we did not have time to go through another editing process and reconcile them. I will just say that I think my referral motion and the amend, the amendments agree in, in spirit, in everything except for which body to refer this to. I very firmly believe that we should refer this to a body that is directly accountable to the voters, since this is an issue that the voters have expressed their opinion on. And the moderators committee, you know, has been appointed in a more, much more opaque process. They've been meeting, but we haven't heard any reports. They don't post meeting minutes, those kinds of things. So that's, that's it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Oh, Miriam?
Thank you. Thank you, Marissa. So I just, I want to actually comment on the referral location. And I want to support Marissa's comment that I, I'm, I'm questionable what, what we would do with it as a select board. So I, I have a big question mark there, but definitely I don't want it to go to the moderators committee. Because every time I actually talk to the moderators committee about referring or making any actual decision, I get a lot of pushback. We don't do that. We don't do that. I don't know what they do. Their meetings aren't posted or public. They're not followable. I haven't seen a single report from them. Every time I have to interact with Loc again, I get, I get just a ton of pushback. So what, whatever happens to it, it needs to be transparent. And I don't think that's the moderators committee. So whether it comes to us or, or it doesn't get referred and, and just goes to vote to the town meeting. I, I have no, I have a big question mark, but I do feel strongly referring to the moderators committee is not where it should go.
The problem I have is that I was very strong defender of the majority rules when it came to Pierce. And that was a lot smaller majority, although the size of a majority doesn't matter in the, in the law. It was, you know, psychologically, it doesn't matter. And it was a very substantial voice in favor of capping than the number of stores. I happen to be opposed to that. I voted against that, that question. But I
I happen to be opposed to that. I voted against that, um, that question. Um, but I. To, to, I, I think it should go to town meeting, and honestly, I think town meeting should say no, that we want to respect the voters. If you bring it back to us, I, I can't think of a mechanism for going around the cap without going around the cap. And that's what the people vote for, yeah.
A couple of questions, um, that I'd love to just get some information on. Uh, are we at any kind of um, risk, uh, even if it's uh, only financial risk? Uh, if, if, if we do not, if we continue to expect to collect revenues from our existing licensees. And yet we do nothing to provide for the, the, a social equity licensee?
So there's not, there's a non-zero risk of that. I would, I think town council would characterize that risk as small. Right? What we have heard in passing unofficially is, has been that. The optics of the timeline may call into question Brooklyn's commitment to its social equity policies. That's all we've heard. We have not heard officially from any member of the C C C. We have not seen their final regulations on this. You know, we are, we are not in a position where we think that it's. It's, you know, where the specter of this, you know, being called out of compliance with this rule is um. Is, is, is a significant risk. It's a non-zero risk, and that's why we have to bring it up. Uh, it's a, but it's not a. You know, it's not even a fifty percent or twenty-five percent. It really is. A question, it's, it's something that we don't have a lot of insight into and won't until the C C C puts its regulations out. But again, to. Call Brooklyn has done. The law says you have to have a social equity policy. Uh, and Brooklyn has social equity policy. Um, yet equity policy has to promote uh, the ability of um. Historically disadvantaged community members to get into the, to, to get into the business, share in the benefits of this new um. This new social rep, uh, and our policy does that. So. You know, the, the argument that um. The argument that, you know, town meeting is intervening decision, and the voters intervening decision or concurrent decision. To place a limit on the number of retail licenses. Uh, somehow does comport the spirit of that. I think that would be a tough argument for them to make. Um, but it's not, um. And you know, the, the kind of, because the, the issue had been raised, well, look at this timeline, isn't it interesting that? Um, we just have to be cognizant of that, that there is a non-zero chance that the state may bring that to our attention. It's something that they're going to start about.
Yeah, if we were founded, I'd be fine.
Um, we would be, uh, the, some of our um, post-community agreement uh, money would be taken away from us.
There's amounts to about that much.
Well, right now, we are going to get about a million dollars. Uh, but I would say that, let's, let me take it back. Last year, we got around, last best year, we got around a million dollars. Part of this great reeval, reevaluation, state should change the rules for how host community. Agreement fees can be collected. Um, and we are still in negotiation. Existing license holders about how the future of that is going to evolve. Um, suffice it to say that community, it used to be communities, not us, but other communities would, took, took a look at that law and say. They can charge up to three percent, um, revenues. Said, alright, I'll take three percent. Um, and that didn't give them a second thought. Um, we actually did itemize, develop a process for analyzing what that, what that cost was. But now the state has said you need to take an even harder look at that and really pare down in all. What you can reasonably relate to actual costs of operation, of the impact of operations.
And, and just a final comment on. I, I will favor uh, this referral back to the select board, because um. I, I think we need to keep working on this, um, in hope of finding some kind of a social equity solution. And I, I don't pretend to know what that might be, but I know we won't find it if we don't go looking for it. And um. I think the referral act was, is, is a, was a good start. Uh, and I've seen a miracle happen tonight to C T O S and the responses of Article thirteen. It got the other on the same page, it's out of the rest of it.
And I even agree.
Yeah, yeah. It's been a draw.
Paul? Let's see if I can pull it up, a Mary, what am I, now? Um, so, the question before us is whether we reconsider our vote, which was to say no to Warren Article seventeen. Um, and, and possibly adopt or, or referral.
Our, our current position is no action.
Is, our current position is.
I just thought you could say that, credit, but your current position is in favor of the advisory committee's motion. Which amends the language from marijuana to cannabis, sort of wise, not allowed.
Sure, sure, got the increase and.
Right, no expertise.
So, I, this question of where the referral goes, I think is the point. And I respectfully disagree with my other two colleagues, that the select board is the right place for this to go. Um, there's a moderators committee that's in place. Um, they have a, a mission, uh, and a charge that is very similar to what we're asking to be done here. Um, the, the uh, the vote amendment uh, motion is asking for a report back in November. The cannabis control commission isn't even taking this issue up and won't issue guidance until after November. So we'll be, we, we'll quite possibly be. Past town meeting before the select board can even make any type of report back. Um, I think we're at risk of getting, you know, conflicting uh, efforts between the moderators committee, which is also looking at this. And the select board committee that's looking at it. The select board, we have full authority and ability. To take the outlook in consideration of moderators committee and adjust, adopt, or change as we see fit. Um, so I think, uh, I could support referral if it goes back to the moderators committee. Um, and let them do their work and complete their work and, and then bring it back to us and to town meeting.
Okay, the moderators committee is the cannabis, um. It's, it's not C N A.
It's a moderators committee to deal with issues, um, related to cannabis, um, operating issues, equity issues.
Right. The shorthand is the Warren Article seven moderators committee, um, because that was created in November of twenty twenty-one.
And, okay, uh, Marion?
Um, I'm just curious. So, uh, thank you, Chaz. It was created in November of twenty twenty-one. Do we have anything that that committee has done that's tangible? Any reports, any outputs, anything?
You're not in front of us to answer that, Marion. So, I kind of want to ask them.
I know the answer. It, it's a rhetorical question, really.
Uh, um, yeah. Say, um. Uh, I'm, I'm the select board representative on cannabis mitigation advisory committee. And reached out to um, the moderators committee early on, they, uh, when they first took that role. Uh, and basically got, had, had no, you know, or minimal communication back. So I can understand Marion's hesitation about this. Um, I don't know that they, I mean, I think they, they, they certainly have been meeting. Uh, they've been discussing, but in terms of output, it's difficult to know without uh, getting them to provide the output. Uh, sort of like the, as soon as he had to give us a report on what their advice is. Um, so, uh. Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm struggling between, come on, this is what the voters said, they could loan. Uh, and, uh, and, and referring, uh, but, uh, I, I, I guess I'd still come down on, this is what the voters said.
Okay, John?
Well, um, I'm with Marion on the moderators committee, not the, uh. They're kind of, you know, known for the meetings they haven't had. Um, and, and, you know, the results that we haven't got. And I say that not, not to be disrespectful, but, you know, they, they've got enough to do. And frankly, I don't think they are a committee that is going to be too enthusiastic about finding solutions to this social equity policy. Um, because I think they are going to be more inclined to say, you know, as Mike just said, the voters have spoken, you know, why should we bother? Um, you know, the, the, it's clear what the voters, all this is to do. So. You know, I think if, if anything's going to happen as we're doing this, and it's not going to be easy, I think it's going to have to have to do with the select board. And I don't think we have to have a select board's committee. We just have to act as a select board. And, and take responsibility for having a social equity policy that means something in Brooklyn, if we can.
Okay, um, Paul?
So, um.
Thank you, Marion.
So, I, let's. I want to take a step back, man, or, or. The, the analogy here would be if we referred the Pierce question to a, a select board for reconsideration. Um, John's proposal, if that was actually adopted as a referral. Um, you know, the, the voters were very clear about Pierce, and they're even more clear about Candace. And the only reason for referral. Is, is to, is because people don't want to vote against the article, not against equity. A vote against Article seventeen is not a vote against equity. We already have an equity policy, it's in place. This body adopted it, not longer. So there is a social equity policy in place, as the town administrator just described. So what is the purpose of referral? Why do we need to do that? Frankly, I think referral at this point just says, we're not going to respect the will of voters, the way that we respected them on Pierce. And I, I don't, I don't understand that logic. Um, and, you know, at any time. We can revisit the social equity policy as a body. We don't need a referral from town meeting to do that. It's our policy. We can amend it as needed. So I could, I think I'm going to be, uh, in line with Mike in voting, uh, to not reconsider, stick with that.
Uh, before Marion, uh, speaks, uh, can you just say that it's one thing to have a policy, it's another thing to actually implement a policy? And that's where, where we, um, having a policy doesn't mean anything, it, it, it. Have a procedure or process for implementing it. So, uh, Marion?
Yes, thank you. So first.
Let me just say that it's not, I just want to fall on Scott and Amy.
Yeah, so I, I was going to say Scott and Amy actually sits on that committee, and so he's happy to speak to the outfits. So I was going to ask you if you could promote him to speak. And then the second I would say is, you know, Paul, I totally respect your position to not refer to anybody. But then I would vote, I, then to me, your logic is that you should vote not to refer. Um, but then to revert to the moderators committee, that's, that's my struggle, right? That's this, I, I just don't see how that's an option. But. Those are separate issues. Now, I'm in a, I'm going to give remarks at town meeting. Explaining why I feel differently on this. Mike, you have seen my remarks, so I would implore you to think about those remarks as we discuss. Um, as we discuss this question, uh, but I just wanted to, to say that Scott's here to talk about the committee.
Uh, Scott, and we're running out of time.
Yes, I'm also running out of time. I've got to get over to the high school still, so I will be brief. Um, I have sit on the committee. I don't think the committee is the right place for this. The committee, um. Uh, honestly speaking, was, was, was formed to kill Article seven. Uh, it took a backseat on. The Warren article which brought up question three to the ballot, took a backseat on, on Article three. Um, the, the chair explicitly said he did not want the committee to, 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 um, weigh in. When the select board equity policy was brought up, the chair explicitly said the committee was not the right place to discuss that as well. I find it extremely suspicious that now suddenly the committee is the right place for this article. Um, in my opinion, nothing is preventing the Article seven committee from continuing to discuss equity, and maybe they'll have good suggestions for the select board, but. Basically, we've tried that and it hasn't worked. It's, uh, we might as well try something else for this, this article this time, because the Article seven committee is not working. Um, and that's as a, as a member, I can say that. Thanks.
Okay, but, um, Marissa, you're not suggesting, uh, referring to articles. Does the moderators maybe you're suggesting referring to us? So, let's just make sure that.
There, there is a motion to abandon Marissa's petition.
Okay, so. Uh, okay, it's not hearing, uh, but I did give Scott the opportunity, so.
Okay.
Susan Park.
Thank you, Bernard. My name is Susan Park. I'm a, uh, town meeting member from, uh, precinct seventeen. And, um, so just today, I mean, I am on the Brooklyn Wellness Committee. And I was at the meeting and I sent my name to John Clinchy, who's part of the health department, and we talked about. The, um, um, the moderators committee, and so they are actively working. They are. Collecting data and they are, you know. Trying to collate all their information to respond to social equity licenses such as this. And quite frankly, this is a different time from when, uh, Warren Article seven came before town meeting. And we had a May second vote. Um. We won by sixty-one point five percent in town and, and every single precinct. So to kind of think that, you know, this is very similar to Warren Article seven. From a couple of years ago, times are different. You know, we want to honor our voters. We want to be able to look them in the eye and be seen and say, you know what? We, we fought to represent you. And this moderators committee, they are doing the work. And to start from scratch and start as a select board. Committee, I mean, is, is burdensome. It's going to, um, cause more work, more time. And the work's not going to go any faster just because they started a new one. It's like. Let's use the people who are already there and who've already spent a year's time researching. And so I completely disagree with.
Okay, I'm not getting it back. Okay, um, any other comments? And then I'm going to call off the, uh, question of reconsideration. Okay, uh, I move a reconsideration of, uh, Warren Article seventeen. All in favor, John?
Aye.
Um, Marion?
Aye.
Oh, wow, okay. Uh, Mike?
No.
Uh, Paul?
No.
Oh, that puts it on me. Um. No. Sorry, Marissa. Unnecessarily complicated. Okay, uh, next. Oh, this is the final article, Warren Article nineteen.
There's been, um, um, a couple of things that happened in the first one. Um, there's been, um. Uh, the advisory committee, uh, drafted a motion to refer, um. Voted that the town administrator would be approval of the select board, bring together representatives. Non-rotting governmental bodies working on these issues with the focus, conditions of discrimination, economic disparity with the focus. Members of Brooklyn's African-American and ethnic communities. Expect, expectation for the recommended, the town administrator will come up with specific recommendations that directly address. These concerns and other concerns raised by Warren Article nineteen. Um, then there was another referral motion, um, simply to you for additional. Refer the subject matter of Article nineteen to the select board for additional consideration. Um. Um.
I will, the first one was withdrawn by Candace.
Well, how did they vote last night? Does anybody know what, what happened last night?
I, I thought I was watching, I, I thought that they had voted through the referral. I thought that they, it's my recollection, but I can.
I thought they voted not to reconsider.
Oh.
Yeah, right.
Janice did withdraw.
Okay, so that's the withdrawal. So the only thing for you then is, is the David Scully.
So, uh, I move, um.
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah, go, go ahead.
Yeah.
Can I make one comment before you give the move or should? Yeah, so I was not part of this body when we put out this article and voted for zero. Um, I just, I do want to have the opportunity to go on like that, that, um, I'm in support of this article. Um, I believe that, um, there's been a tremendous amount of noise. Associated with the article and it, it hasn't, there's no relation to the merits of what, what is being proposed to go into the bylaw. What's going into the bylaw is not some newsletter, right? It's, it's, it's a call for a commission for black and brown residents, which, well, second. Uh, black and brown residents that, um, I, I believe, um, is, there's a great need for it. Um, I think much of the emotion, energy, uh, sometime very strong and harsh. Is, is, much of it is based on frustration, and I can understand that. Um, I, I believe that. Any important things that we do, when we move away from the status quo, we can find any number of reasons to not do it. Um, you know, we've seen that time and time again. Um, and I just, I believe at this time, uh. Creating a beachhead, adding a black and brown commission, similar to a commission for women. I think that's, that's the right thing to do at this time. That's my opinion. I know it may be different than, than on the floor, but I respect that.
So, um, let me say that, I, I have, the newsletter is irrelevant as far as I'm concerned. Um, uh, we had one of the, one of the funds of Article nineteen's draft that said, uh, I know where you live, Mike. Uh, in the select board meeting, and my, my sort of internal response was, well, I know where you live. You know, my feathers are not ruffled by that. Uh, it's just a dotted mark. Um, as dumb as it may be, uh, you have to consider the issue on the merits. Uh, and I think the difficulty I have, or I know the difficulty I have is, we have a commission on diversity, inclusion in community relations. That commission was put together largely to provide, um. That commission was put together largely to provide um, a forum and a mechanism. For people of color. And I don't see a reason to duplicate that for a subset of people of color. And in fact, it isn't really even a subset. It seems to me that it covers. Black and brown people. Who else? It's, well, okay, there is an Asian community, very good point. Uh, but um, and it's substantial, but it should there be a committee, a commission for Asian Americans? Uh, you you perhaps, what's what do you say? Okay, there's there should be a commission that deals with diversity issues character.
So let me uh just say that, um, to say that you're for black and brown issues is just the first step in in our analysis. Of what is being proposed. I mean, Ronald Reagan used to say, trust but verify. We have to verify what is being proposed here. And if you look at the language, the language doesn't really say anything, other than. Centralizing force to deal with black and brown issue. I'm not sure what that means. And we can clearly do better to address the real issues that a black and brown community in Brooklyn faces. And it's not just for black people, for uh Hispanic people. Um. And you know, we can do better and, you know, I I don't care about the newsletter. I mean, some of the people that they attack have attacked me. And I don't care about that either, you know, because what goes around comes around. But, you know, just looking at the merits of this proposal, there's nothing there. And and that that's, I think that's really important. Uh, John?
So so in in all of the back and forth that's been happening, you know, involving our town council and members of town meeting. Um, I seem to have heard the message that if we are on the record for this. Um, and then we change and all of a sudden we're now um not for this. And if there's any implication that the reason for the change is because of things that were said in a black and brown newsletter. That that would be a bad thing. And so I really need to know right now, what what are we being asked to do right now? To affirm our earlier vote?
To reconsider our earlier vote, which was. Uh, no action on Warren Article nineteen. If we reconsider, then those the issues that have been raised by the referral come come up. If we don't reconsider, then our old vote, uh, no action remains.
Our vote happened before that newsletter came out, so I just.
Just one, one, one. No, no. Uh, so first of all, I started out saying that if it was a four, it was four zero, I wasn't here. And I had no intention of trying to convince you otherwise. Okay, I understand that. Um, I do want to say that the idea that there's, you know, there's not specificity about this. And somehow that need to work. Just point out that we just voted for an office, right, of housing stability with no specificity. Other than naming it. So, um, again, I I I understand, I respect my colleagues' different opinion. Um, on on this issue, um, I I have a different opinion. I believe now's the right time to do it. And if we were to reconsider it, I wouldn't ask you to reconsider it to refer. I'd ask you to reconsider it to. Say vote positive action.
Okay, I'd like to move the question of whether to reconsider our original vote on Warren Article nineteen. Um, uh, no action. All in favor? Okay, so if you're in favor of that motion, you want to reconsider.
Yeah.
If you're not in favor of reconsidering, you have to say no. Definitely sure it's clear. Uh, all in favor, John?
No.
Okay, uh, Maryam?
Oh.
Uh, Mike?
No.
Uh, Paul?
Yes.
And Cheryl as well. Okay, so that makes that easy. Okay, we have one more item on the agenda.
Sam, then you have an amendment to be amended by Mr. Sherman. Yes.
Okay, so very briefly, uh, one of the things included in the rank choice voting. Um, article was a permission to have rank choice voting. Uh, in town meeting elections as well as in town. And they um committed to put this together after some consideration, said, well, you know, it might be a good idea to offer an amendment. Then took that out. Uh, and so that was my amendment. Um, and then the committee thought about it some more and said, well, really, it would be better to take it out altogether. And add it back in this amendment so that it was easier to approve the base article and then try and add. Uh, elections for, you know, ranked voting election counting for uh county members active. So what, I'm pretty happy to withdraw my amendment in preference for uh the revision that that has been proposed, which. Omit um, uh, rank choice voting for county.
Okay, our current measure is.
Um, yeah. You you split two two. So technically, you can take this up again. I could probably help solve the problem.
Yeah, you could. Let me see, let me see what I vote.
Uh, Bernard, it was, it was Mike and I in favor and you and John, uh, no action.
So the the, as I understand, the procedural posture is there's amendment that's been accepted. By the original petitioner that strips town meeting members out of the consideration. Right? Motion is rank choice voting. For local elections, but not for town meeting members. Uh, the amendment. Would add town meeting members in. So base motion is for not is to exclude town meeting members. The amendment which would modify the main motion, which re town meeting members into.
Sure, Green, I'm a member. As a comment before you decide whether you want to move a motion to reconsider. Um, I if had I been on this body when you voted, I would have been voting against rank choice voting.
Okay.
Question? Uh, where do the petitioner sit on these amendments? Do we know?
Oh, in the the um, petitioner isn't, has. They has resubmitted or modified the article to take rank choice voting out of the town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, and they've done that for um, in the hopes that they would then be able to put it back in. If their base, if if they modified, reduced motion passes and we'll see.
Okay, uh, is is that Scott and Amy?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Scott is one of the uh petitions here. So why don't we give him an opportunity? It is four to seven.
Yeah, sorry, I that uh, Mike's got it right, of course. It's the uh. Committee's desire was that town meeting have the opportunity to vote on whether or not town meeting would be covered by rank choice voting. So these amendments are both uh with the, a- according to the desire of the committee, the committee did have a majority that said that they did want rank choice voting. Uh, uh, town meeting members included, but it was not unanimous. Everything else in the Warren article was unanimous.
Okay, yeah, we have a discussion. Uh, John?
On the, sitting on the point, right, if I fall. Um, I would actually favor reconsideration because um it could.
Well, do we have to reconsider?
You didn't, you, I, my understanding is under the parliamentary rules, you don't, you don't take a position on this. You deadlocked. So you you could just, you could. You could move no action.
Um, right, yeah, but. All right, well, then I would move no action on this. And so the Paul, Paul can be on this, and I think we have three members, assuming we have to be on, for no action. I would actually like to take a position on.
Okay, why don't we just kind of get the lower word, the bottom.
Yeah, you're gonna give me another bite at the apple? Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
This is the first bite on this issue. Never mind, go.
Sorry, yeah, no, I I think you've got, you've discussed it before. We're, we are at quarter till. Um, I mean, I strongly believe that rank choice voting, it does. Offer benefits uh to the town, especially in contested elections, which we have, and uh. Um, we've been doing a a little rank choice ballot uh for the cookies at town meeting every night so far, and no one has expressed any confusion about how that works. Um, and uh, yeah, I I think it's been a success so far. I'd like to see it continued in town. Thanks.
Okay, well, town meeting, I'll say, but why don't we vote, um. Uh, John has called for a vote of no action. All in favor, John?
Aye.
Uh, Maryam?
Uh, don't we have to vote to reconsider first?
No, because you never took a position in the first place.
Oh, okay, um. The. No action, so I say no.
Okay, um, Mike?
Sorry, I'm writing something down about that. Article seventeen, speaking on it.
Um, so we're voting women to, we're voting no action.
Uh, I I won't vote for action. I'm gonna vote, voting whatever she said, if she said no.
Okay, so this is, no action, yes and no action.
And Cheryl is yes and no action. So, that's the end of the meeting.
Phil, speak for the board on this then.
Yeah, oh, Maryam's worker up here.
Well, Mike was assigned, but he looks more around the time and said, I know it's twenty two. Oh, that's all.
Um, ranked choice voting is, um, you know, like Sam. And then Paul Warren.
Just the call. Okay.
Uh, I would like to.
Well, we're speaking to her, and she'll say, and you think she's more than all right, I was speaking to my heart. Which already reported.
Whenever you're ready.
Let's go. Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Jericho Brooklyn Select Board, and this is the meeting of the Select Board for May thirty first, two thousand twenty three. Uh, let's start off with the announcements and updates on the Select Board. Any announcements as well? Anyone? John?
Yeah, yes, a quick one here to um. Acknowledge that there is going to be a great event at the Coolish Corner on Saturday. It's the forty third Coolish Corner Arts Festival. Um, as I say, Saturday, June third, eleven AM to six PM, rain or shine.
Recording in progress.
And it takes place, um, so the key intersection is Batcock Street and Harbor Street. But then if you go down back up Cock Street just a little bit, you'll um. See all the booths and you'll see the parking lot with a whole bunch uh of additional booths. And it includes just about everything. It's terrific. Um, contributions from um artists and crafts and persons who. Put their works on display, but then in addition to that, food trucks, even a beer and wine garden. Um, yeah, um, patio dining. And if this all sounds pretty special, um. Uh, I assure you, I was there a year ago and um, it it attracts a lot of people who have fun. So, even on Saturday, uh, December third, June third, eleven AM to six PM, the Coolish Corner Arts Festival.
Thank you, John. Any other? Well, okay, as we'll go on to public comment. Uh, John?
Yeah, um, I've got, I'm, I'm gonna just uh. Recite the some some important information for people. Uh, this is the our weekly public comment segment. It comes with a few rules. Each person's speaking tonight. It's limited to three minutes. You know, you use your entire time as you can if you have. Um, we encourage you to refrain from personal attacks and aggressive personal issues during the comments. Members of the public sometimes raise questions during public comment. We may be able to provide a quick answer, but I'm unlikely to work with staff to get a more thorough answer if you're stronger, you know. Well, as you know, when you have thirty seconds remaining and when your time's up. So please conclude your remarks at that time. If you have more to say, you're welcome to send an email to board members expressing your thoughts. In greater detail, in that way.
The first person to sign up for public comment is Regina Crowley. Your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Hi, Regina Crowley, town meeting member from precinct sixteen. Three quick points. Uh, one is the minutes of last week did not reflect my questions and comments to the planning board, which were very informative as to how they were going. Going to do density and still keep the form base on Harvard Street. So I think it should have reflected that because people will read the minutes. And will understand, I can't put my name, it's the content that mattered, so that people understand that it can be done, but only through. I'm sorry?
Please send those, write them up and send them to Kate and Billbury.
Okay.
And you can talk to me.
Secondly, um, love the DPW, they know I do. I work all the time with you guys. You couldn't be greater. But I do have a request. If you remember the days of the four o'clock Board of Selectmen. Where requests would be made for your budget, we don't do a four o'clock anymore. One year, uh, there was a one inch of snow. And within a couple of weeks where there was no further snow, the DPW asked for a million dollars. And I remember Gil Boy saying, wait, we've only had an inch of snow. And it turns out that it's important to know. That the sand and salt budget is not included in the annual budget. And I wonder if that couldn't be somehow at least. Indicated in such a way that the select board would have a better idea what the budget is for the DPW and. Maybe you don't need a million, you come back for another half minute or something, but it's just something I think you should be aware of. And last but not least, um, I see there are more doughs up there. And I wonder if the Board of Selectmen has a policy or would consider a policy of not allowing anonymous. Uh, people to comment during the Select Board. I think it's important that we all take responsibility for our comments. And we should know who people are so we can judge the merits. Sometimes you need to judge the merits of the source. So another week has another dough up there. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Let me just say that, um, I'm not sure if the town council can correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, that we really can require people to identify themselves, but. When you come in anonymously, we take that into consideration in terms of credibility of what you say, but that's our protection.
Uh, honorable, honorable members of the Select Board, uh, this is my first time coming here. And uh, it's an honor, a great honor for me to be here with you guys. Um, my name is Abbas, and I'm a young resident that wants to involve myself in the community. I'm a twenty-three-year-old and an immigrant from Sudan. I reached out to Black and Brown Club for help with resources to create digital content. They gave me access to their Canva account where I made the image on my phone that I sent to a few of you last night. They have helped me to find a way to share my voice and digital content and raise awareness about the war in Sudan. That started April fifteenth of this year. I also have been interested in getting involved locally and found out about Warren Article nineteen. To create a black and brown commission. I know that a commission like this would help me be truly represented in local, in a local government. And make make sure that the issues that impact my family have are have, will be addressed. And many of my neighbors are excited about this commission and look forward to helping be, uh, helping be a part of the solution to the problem our communities face. But it is really discouraging when we see town officials constantly berating and attacking a young twenty-six-year-old girl. Especially when she's being attacked for helping out the community with a service that I myself have been benefited benefited from. The kind of behavior is really disappointing from those that are supposed to be advocating for and engaging with the youth. That will be the leaders of tomorrow. You sit there and watch this girl put in hours and hours. I mean, I can tell you. Like, it's it's sick to hear her voice. It's obvious, like, she's broken about what happened. And yet she comes and advocates for our community. I've I've been inspired to do the same despite the attacks, that this is what the community is all about. Being changes and bringing out the best in us and about us. And to be honest, of all the, all this seems like a distraction and. Like, taking us away from what is doing, doing what is right and helping our community prosper. And bringing out the best of us and the best of in us, because we are a diverse community at Brooklyn. It seems like this is a really sad attempt at defining a way to not support this Warren article. And I watched a select board hearing of WA nineteen. And some of the other committee hearings have let me tell you, as a resident, the need for this commission is clear. And they explained it at the same way I would have. They would. Whatever the issue is, um, uh, don't take it out on our community. We need this commission to help us raise generations of leaders, support. Warren Article nineteen. Thank you.
The next person to sign up for comment is Jennifer Joe. Been promoted to a panelist who can unmute and share a video if you're comfortable, and your three minutes will begin.
Hello again. I am the editor in chief for Black and Brown News. I also spoke at the last Select Board meeting. Hello again, I am the editor in chief for Black and Brown News. I also spoke at the last Select Board meeting. I want to reiterate, reiterate what my colleague has just said. We have been receiving.
We're having trouble hearing you. Could you pause for a second, uh?
Are you able to hear me now?
Sorry about that. Give us one second, please.
Sir, capture, I think you're.
Yeah, capture's a good thing we can hear.
Sorry about that. Will you try again?
Of course, um, hello again, um, I am the editor.
Sorry, let's try, something else to make sure we can hear this person.
Do you mind trying one more time?
Hello?
Thank you.
All right, I am the editor in chief for Black and Brown News. Um, I also spoke at the last Select Board meeting. Um, we have been receiving emails filled with hate. I, as a young black journalist myself, will not be bullied or threatened. I and my colleagues know our First Amendment rights to freedom of speech and freedom of the press. However, I do have a few questions for the Select Board and town administrator that I would like answered publicly. What does Black and Brown Club as a nonprofit have to do with the Black and Brown Commission? We emailed a Select Board member on four twenty-nine, asking you to correct your statements you made on public record complaining BNBC with us, BMBN. We clarified that we are separate entities and ask you to correct your statements on public record, yet you never replied and did not correct yourself. Why have you kept this information private all this time? Why is there so much focus on BNBC, again, a nonprofit organization, in relation to Warren Article nineteen? Why are they being leaked? Thank you, Black and Brown News.
The next person signed up for public comment is Jane Doe. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable, and your three minutes will begin.
Hello again, everyone. I'm one of the journalists for Black and Brown News who spoke at the last Select Board meeting as well. I want town leadership to know our journalists have been receiving emails with threats from town officials, threats to trample on our freedom of speech and freedom of press. You do not have the right to take away our First Amendment freedoms. It's a little hard to conceive that a bunch of predominantly white folks are calling us black journalists racist. As journalists, we know our rights of free speech. We think that town officials that have been exercising that same right in their hate-filled emails to us. However, we also want it to be known to the town officials to caution your officials. Making threats that we should be mixed with dirt in the ground, implying that we should be buried, is a threat to our lives. They're really treading the line of impeding on our right to freedom of press and free speech. In the course of many months of investigation, we have spoken with many, many Black and Brown residents, town meeting officials, and even reached out to some of you Select Board members as far back as April for comments. Black and Brown News is a collective of investigative journalists, our reports, our work, and hours and hours alone. So why the initial narrative to disrespect and paint our work, our journalism, as that of a Black and Brown nonprofit organization? How is the merit for Warren Article nineteen, creating a Black and Brown Commission for dealing with Black and Brown people's issues, now based on our newsletters, which the petitioners in the Black and Brown community as a whole are not responsible for? Is this really about our newsletter or the fact that some people want the Black and Brown community to continue to remain at the bottom, as we have been in Brookline? A few of the many questions we're going to be looking for answers to. Officials have stated publicly, as recently as yesterday, that BMBN is solely sponsored by Black and Brown Club, which is completely false. Black and Brown Club is not the only sponsor we have for the record. A note of caution for those that continue to make false statements on public record. So I ask the Select Board members to caution town officials to take pause before attempting to trample on our First Amendment rights. Feel free to exercise yours, but public officials making threats to journalists is not a path this town wants to walk. Thank you, Black and Brown News.
At this time, there are thirteen virtual attendees, and, sure, you're gonna pick them. Your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Hello, my name is Sana Hafiz, Brown Brookline resident, precinct four. BNBC National Program Director. I know we're well aware of this at this point. I'm no stranger to you, and neither are you all to me. It should go without saying that I don't condone racism or bigotry. As a Brown, first-generation Pakistani-American Muslim woman, I am no stranger to racism and bigotry, and I have faced it in Brookline more times than I can count. I wanted to again clear up some of the confusion that folks that are less tech savvy have been having. I, as the National Program Director for BNBC and the registering officer that created the BNBC Canva account, usually you have to pay to unlock premium features, but because BNBC is a registered five-on-one C three nonprofit organization, we get those features for free. As a part of our many initiatives as a charitable organization, we encourage folks that want to increase their digital, digital literacy skills, or those seeking resources to create content, to reach out to us to use the Canva account. Some of our charitable initiatives include the CAP program, in which we donated five hundred dollars to over one hundred Black and Brown families, as well as travel aid to mothers getting their constant daycare, and the Historic Aviation Program, where we sponsor more than six Brookline residents first way. To our Digital Literacy Initiative with our partnership with Brookline Interactive Group. BMBN isn't even the first or only news media group that we have donated to. Belltop Media is another such group, and you'll see them tonight. Any media that, any of the many groups and individuals that we give access to this Canva account will show myself as the author because the account is in my name as the BNBC registering officer. This is similar to the process where any nonprofit organization needs a name on the company's bank card. We should all know this. This will be the case no matter what device the media is made on. One of the residents that has used our account is here as well, Abbas, who you just spoke to a few minutes ago. They even sent out an email last night during advisory with an image that they created on their device, their phone. I encourage you all to look at it yourselves. All of this has been clarified by several different posts and several different entities. BNBC is not BMBN. I did not write that newsletter, and all of this has been repeated and repeated over and over again. All of this is being used to discredit Warren Article nineteen and the Black and Brown Commission. This Warren Article was a group effort by residents, and it is overwhelmingly supported by the Black and Brown community. We've explained the reason this commission needed, how it will function, its purpose, so on and so forth, detailed numerous times through numerous meetings every second. This commission is almost verbatim the Women's Commission Warren Article. We, the petitioners, have worked with advisory, town council, the moderator, and others to ensure this article is within scope and within a legal framework. We have worked with Lloyd, who supports this commission enthusiastically. There's no reason to not support Warren Article nineteen before, and there's still no reason today to support Warren Article nineteen. Thank you.
At this time, there are fifteen virtual attendees. There are three in person. No one is using the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate if they'd like to make a comment.
Thank you, Devin. Next, Ms. Lanius, I have this question of approving the following meeting minutes, May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, and May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Any edits, uh, besides, uh, redeem this edit? Okay, I will, please do, uh, uh, members from May twenty-third, May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, all in favor, please, none, none, saying aye. John?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Uh, Michael?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Next, question of approving the proclamation recognizing June as LGBTQ pride month in the town of Brookline. Um, why do we take that and, 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 Marion, do you want to read the proclamation separate from the other items?
Yeah, because then I have to, I sound like a problem. Uh, whereas the town of Brookline has a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning plus community, and is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equity for all people in the community, and whereas many of the residents, students, town employees, and business owners within the town of Brookline, who contribute to the enrichment of our town, are part of the LGBTQ plus community, and whereas various advancements have been made with respect to equitable treatment of LGBT Q plus persons of our nation, but there continues to be discrimination against people from this community and around the world, making it important for municipalities like Brookline to stand up and show support for our residents who are affected. And whereas several cities across the United States recognize and celebrate June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month, and whereas June has become a symbolic month in which lesbians, gay men, bisexual people, transgender, questioning persons plus, and supporters come together in various celebrations of pride. And whereas the rainbow flag, also known as the LGBTQ plus pride flag or gay pride flag, has been used since the nineteen seventies as a symbol of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, questioning pride, and LGBTQ plus social movements. And whereas, painting the pride crosswalk, which I won personally, at the town hall further symbolizes the town's celebration of diversity and support for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning community. Now, therefore, the Select Board of the Town of Brookline, Massachusetts does hereby proclaim the month of June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the town of Brookline, and invites everyone to reflect on ways we all can live and work together with commitment to mutual respect and understanding, and further recognizes Pride Month by painting a pride crosswalk outside the town hall and at Lincoln School in collaboration with GSA and Rainbow Line Advisors.
Thank you. So unless anyone has questions or comments, I'd like more approval of the Pride Proclamation.
Okay, Stan, quick, uh, putting onto that, um, and I would simply say that as part of this, uh, there's actually gonna be a parade tomorrow.
Oh, yes.
Um, tomorrow, Thursday first, um, uh, starting in the museum, and, uh, starting in the, from the high school, and it'll go to the teen center, and then there's gonna be a party with food and refreshments at the teen center. So I, I really especially appreciate the leadership that people from the high school are showing, um, in, in this particular area, and, uh, I think that was reflected in the proclamation during this event. Uh, but it's also represented by the fact that, that there will be this, uh, this parade tomorrow starting at the high school, and pretty much put together, I think, by kids from the high school and their, uh.
Any other, uh, hang around there, do you vote?
I am.
So, uh, all in favor of the proclamation addressed by, uh, Marion, uh, Marion? Please indicate by saying aye. John?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, we have, um, a number of, uh, let's see, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, with plenty of items in addition to the proclamation. Now, we'll read them real quickly. I think everyone has, um, reviewed this and, and know background details. Uh, okay, first, authorization to hire request for cyber security analysis by the Information Technology Department. Second, accepting a grant, uh, from, uh, the U, the, uh, mayors, Boston Mayor's Office of Emergency Management, Urban Area Security Initiative, under the Cyber Security Initiative, the goal area for, for Brookline, and our Information Technology Department for the acquisition of a third-party vendor management service. Question of approving extra work order number three, uh, work done, um, related to school ground maintenance. Question of approving contract, DPW twenty-three, twenty-one, for sewer system rehabilitation. Question of approving authorization to hire request from the public library for the following position, a reference librarian and a branch supervisor. Question of approving the following appropriation transfer. Um, and this is separate from the appropriation transfer from the, uh, to be submitted to the advisory committees, just so you don't confuse anything there. Um, appropriation transfer within the Council of Aging Budget, in a total of thirty-eight hundred twenty-eight dollars. Um, appropriation transfer request from the Department of Public Works Arts and Open Space in the amount of eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, and appropriation transfer request from the Department of Public Works in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. Appropriation transfer request from the Department of Public Works divisions in the amount of ninety-three thousand five hundred dollars. And the difference between those, and we'll, um, far around later, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that, that these are just corporations that are already, uh, or transfers that are already appropriated funds, uh, where there's no, no need for one type of expenditure, there is a need for other types of expenditure. Not necessarily those in the advisory committee. So, um, unless anyone has any questions, I'd like some more approval of those miscellaneous items.
Uh, yeah, one of those three actually has to go to advisory for approval as well, because it involves transferring out of parks, into, no, I ask.
Okay, which is, what is that?
The one for, uh, ninety-three, that's the number.
Five, okay, right.
Eighty-five thousand five, so that, that we're actually requesting a transmit that to East Avenue.
Okay, we'll, we'll approve it anyway, you can do what you like. Okay, all in favor, uh, John?
Aye.
Uh, Marion's not here.
Aye, 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 aye.
Sorry. Marion said aye, and Mike said aye, and Paul?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Um, next, reserve fund transfer DPW, reserve fund transfer request, and, uh, request is submitted to the advisory committee for approval, um, in the amount of forty-four hundred forty-four thousand one hundred forty-two dollars. And I'm gonna sort of put that together with, um, the next two reserve fund transfers, if that's okay. Uh, reserve fund transfer request for election expenses to be submitted to the advisory committee for approval. Um, and reserve fund transfer town meeting.